Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Dover City Council Meeting for September 8th, 2014. We will have our invocation led by the Reverend Theodore Henderson, followed by our pledge to the nation's flag led by Councilman Anderson.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, our hearts go out today for Dr. and Mrs. Mattern who are going through crisis. This man who has dedicated many hours, dear God, taking care of our community. He himself has a need, and we pray that you'll be with his wife, dear God, and that you be with the family. We're also aware, dear God, that our world is ripping apart, and we pray for unity. We pray for unity, and we pray for wisdom for our elected officials, our president, and let us come together as a country, dear God. Let us be diligent in all that we do. And we are the Dover community, dear God. We're also a part of this world. We have a responsibility, dear God, to be, well, to be responsible for all of our citizens. So we pray for all the movements that are taking place, dear God, to bring us together as a people. We pray for the election tomorrow, dear God. We pray that you put people in office, dear God, who are about doing your business and doing the business, dear God, of the people who will put them there in the first place. Not only their, not just their own self-interest. We just pray that fervently. We're thankful once again for the city council, for each elected member, for each servant, dear God, who's here to do your will. Let us all work together. Let us, if we cannot praise, cease from being so critical of our elected officials. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Councilman Anderson. We have before us this evening's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
There's no additions. I'll move for approval as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Hutchison, second by Mr. Dixon to approve the agenda as submitted tonight. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As is unanimously. We now have before us the consent agenda. Those items on the council agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial are marked with an asterisk. They'll be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. No separate discussion of the items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. What's the pleasure of council?
Move for acceptance.
Second.
By Mr. Hare, second by Mrs. Williams. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Hare?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda tonight, the certificate of congratulations for Dr. Michael Mattern. I'd invite Mayor Christensen, Dr. Mattern, and Councilman Sean Lynde to the podium. Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, sir.
Before we do that, we have to read it into the record.
I apologize.
That's quite all right, sir. Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record, please?
This certificate of congratulations is presented to Dr. Michael L. Mattern for 33 years of devoted service as an orthopedic surgeon serving in the Dover area since 1981. We wish you the best with your future endeavors as you enjoy your retirement years.
Dr. Mattern, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Dover, the mayor and the council, I'd like to present this certificate of congratulations to you, but I'm going to defer to someone who is like your other son, and that's Councilman Lynn.
Dr. Mattern, I can't tell you how proud we are of you and all the time that you've devoted to our community, both with the city, the local high schools, Wesley College, all that you've done for everyone in the city of Dover. We know that you're going through a difficult time right now, and we want you to know that collectively we love you and care about you, and we're very proud of you. And on behalf of the mayor and the city council, we'd like to give you this token of our appreciation on behalf of the city of Dover for being what a citizen of the city of Dover should be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, and Councilman Lynn. This certainly is a privilege, one I hadn't expected, and it is appreciated. After 33 years of working, I have to thank the people of the city and the surrounding area as well for allowing me to help them in their orthopedic needs. So it has been certainly a pleasure. I have enjoyed it. I have appreciated all the help I've had from the medical community, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and giving me their blessing. Thank you.
Dr. Mattern, or Mike, I would like to say, just so you can rest at night, all the trips that the Lucky Ten had back in the '90s, and we went different places, but I think the statute of limitations has run out. When we came back from Spain that year with all those bags stuffed with Cuban cigars, I don't think that anything can happen to us now, so you can rest easy now. But it's been a great...
Keep that quiet.
Well, this won't go public, I'm sure. But I just want to say it's been, it was a great eight, nine-year run that we had with all the trips and everything, so.
The nice thing about it, Mr. Hare and Dr. Mattern, is what you don't realize, they were really Dominicans.
Probably.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mattern, it's good to see you here this evening. Again, congratulations on behalf of all of us through the council.
Thank you, sir.
You're a credit to our community, and I want to wish you all the best in your retirement. Sooner or later, the phone's going to ring and say, you've got to come back. Step ended. Thank you. Item number three on the agenda this evening is a presentation on the reentry opportunity program. I would invite Ken Abraham and Alfreda Durant Russ to the podium for the presentation this evening. First, before that takes place, I would certainly like to ask Janine to climb out and make a remark or two.
Good evening, and thank you very much. I simply want to introduce our staff to you. This is with the Dover Interfaith Mission for Housing, which I chair. We have been fortunate to obtain some grant funding to enable us to help more of the men coming out of prison who make up a fairly large share of the homeless population served by our shelter. Before Ken Abraham speaks, I'd like to simply point out Alfreda Restorant, who is our job developer, and Kathy Copera, who is our prison liaison. I will let Ken Abraham speak in more detail about the program. Thank you very much for having us here this evening.
Thank you, Janine. Ken, the floor is yours. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you. I'd like to thank Lynn Sandusky of the Human Relations Committee, who helped implement getting us on the agenda. Good evening, city council members, council for the city, chief, and Mr. Mayor. You know, I know you have many important issues coming before you. It's hard for me to imagine one more important than helping to rebuild lives and produce productive and constructive citizens. Of course, that's what Dover Interfaith does every day. But now they have this new grant, as Janine has mentioned, and they've hired my nonprofit, Citizens for Criminal Justice, to partner with them in this reentry program. We're ramping it up a notch to help the fellows in reentry. In a nutshell, we provide extensive and intensive counseling and mentoring to these guys and helping them, you know, what they need most, of course, they have the roof over their head and meals to eat, need to keep their butts out of trouble and avoid alcohol or drugs if that was the problem, but what most of them need most is a job, which is what brings us here this evening. Commissioner Coop is on board with the program. He would have been here tonight, but he had a conflicting appointment to show his support, new commissioner of the Department of Corrections. Our goal here is not just to get jobs for these fellows. It's to establish a win-win situation or relationship with the city of Dover, where we will be providing you with dependable, responsible workers for any job openings that you might have, for which they are qualified. I read the mayor's comments about having some reservations about the program, and anybody should have reservations about hiring convicted felons or former convicts, but we hope to allay any concerns. We have the team in place to minimize any possible, you know, negative outcomes and provide you with the very kind of people I described to you that we hope to do. You know, nothing would tickle me more than to get a call if I should live 10 more years from someone who said, you know, "Hi, I'm so-and-so. I'm celebrating my 10th year anniversary, working for the city of Dover as a clerk or whatever, and thanks so much for helping me get there and get back on my feet and rebuilding my life." I spend my role, I spend a lot of time with, one-on-one with these men. Couple of hours initially, and then follow-up appointments discussing all aspects of reentry. I sort of sniff them out, if you will, having been around so many people in my diverse experiences, get their background, assess some of their needs. Our case manager has a detailed needs assessment checklist furthermore, their interests, point of certain resources, that sort of thing. And I have a lot of things in mind in talking to them, but not, the least of which is our church reentry program. It's active in a couple of churches now, a great success in getting some of them in a positive environment, providing them a little help along the way, little financial resources, and we hope to expand that with another eight or nine churches. So we're looking for a select few to put in there. So just as with that program, we want to be very, very careful that we send the right people to the right opportunity, and that's what we aim to do with the city of Dover if we can get your attention on this issue. By the way, I know the city has a great relationship with the shelter, and we're just looking to strengthen it further. Of course, when we help those in reentry, we help our community. I mean, I think that goes without saying at this point. I want to emphasize to you, we'll be sending you the people who want to change their lives, you know? Not everybody, not all these guys want to change. Some of them want to keep doing the rambunctious, stupid stuff they did that landed them in prison. That's why we spend a good amount of time with them to satisfy ourselves. We're looking at the ones who really are sick and tired of being sick and tired, as they say, and want to improve their lives and take advantage of the opportunities that may await them. Unfortunately, coming out of prison, those opportunities are few and far between. You know, 40 years ago, there may have been much better reason to be concerned about hiring an ex-convict because they probably had committed some sort of heinous crime. The fact is today, in the state prisons across the country, about one-third of the population are nonviolent drug offenders. In the federal system, it's up to one-half. You know, they made a mistake. They had a substance abuse problem, abuse problem. They get effective treatment. They need a job. They need a job to stay out of trouble, stay out of temptation. They're not really high-risk individuals, especially once we screen them the way we do. And, you know, even as little as six months incarceration, you can lose everything quick, fast, and in a hurry, as they say, as I did, as many do. Get locked up, you need to start from ground zero. So I get all kinds of stuff on our Facebook page. Somebody sent me the song "God Bless America" recently, compilation of various celebrities singing a line of the song, the first line of which is, you'll remember, "Stand beside her and guide her." That struck me immediately, you know, that phrase. What we need to do with my nonprofit is guide America back on track to fixing the criminal justice system, which has deteriorated seriously over 40 years, and guide everyone into adjusting their thinking about hiring ex-cons, former prisoners, whatever you want to call them. We hope the city will notify us of any and all job openings, or Britta can check online once a month, or however she may deem necessary, and we're asking the city to make a commitment with your human resources person. Oh, by the way, Lynn asked me to meet with, whoops, forgot his name, Cecil Wilson of your Human Relations Committee on the 23rd and answer any further questions they have, and I'll be glad, I'll be planning to do that. We're asking, hoping that the city will make a commitment to interview qualified applicants who come through us for, recommended for certain job positions, just to interview them, pass a proclamation, make it an official city policy, discuss it with your human resources person, ask us any question you have. The whole team is here tonight with the exception of one person who works in Georgetown and had a long day to answer any questions you might have. Short of that, maybe a proclamation or statement, make it as vague or general as you want, but saying that as an official body, the city of Dover supports the hiring of qualified convicted felons. That's what we hope to see. I've got parts of, let me point out, Britta Littlefield, the lady in the stand-up Take a Bat. She is our primary educational instructor and job placement person at the shelter. She does one heck of a job, by the way. And the paper misquoted the situation. There was an article in the State News, "I'm not the one who specifically determines which person might be best suited for what job opening." That's Britta, and she does a heck of a job in placing the right people in the right situations. It was an exceptional circumstance. Last week, she got a guy two jobs within 48 hours. But she's meticulous. She's still, if I have time, I want to come back and read part of her resume. She's been on board for about three years now with Dover Interfaith, but let me finish this up. I'd be glad, delighted to fax you or, you know, email you her resume on request. Furthermore, we're hoping to ask, we hope to get a letter signed by every city council member and the mayor to whom it may concern for us to take in hand to future prospective employers. Alfreda and I hope to meet, we've got several, eight or nine major local employers targeted to sit down, explain the program, sit down with the human resources manager, explain the program, answer any questions, and ask them to make a commitment to interview qualified people that we send to them. And it certainly wouldn't hurt if we could have a letter from the city saying that you support, to whom it may concern, we realize this letter is being presented, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, however you see fit to phrase it if you do such a thing, being presented to potential employers, and we encourage you and other members of our community to hire qualified job applicants who may be convicted felons. Another thing I just want to point out about reentry, which isn't often mentioned, you know, some of you former present police officers, I remember as a prosecutor, meeting crime victims every day, the anguish and agony, not to mention the expense, the pain and sorrow. When we help people with reentry, we reduce recidivism, we prevent crime. You know, our approach to crime previously has been after the fact, you know, how can we help you? Get the bad guy. How can we help the victim? When we help these guys get back on their feet, we reduce any possibility they're going to commit crimes, we prevent future crime victims, and I do suggest that's another important consideration. I do have a couple of minutes to whip through just some, some little bit of what I took off of Britta's resume. She developed a 12-week job readiness program addressing the needs of a new shelter guest as well as long-term guests facing challenges in obtaining employment, tracked progress of participants to provide information to case manager and shelter management, developed 10-week life skills program called "A New Path to Your Future," organized training team to provide weekly job readiness classes at every level required by participants, help them prepare for job interviews, prepare their resumes, et cetera, developed a job search handbook for shelter guests. She was a member of the professional, she was the chairperson of the Job Development Committee of the Professional Services Group prior to joining the shelter, facilitated networking opportunities that allowed for the exchange of knowledge of information for the members of the group, developed 16 presentations to assist group professionals in their job search, collaborated with the PSG County facilitator to ensure the mission of the group is being achieved, coordinated closely with five additional PSG committees' chairpeople to ensure open and ongoing communications. That's a little bit about her. She is the, she's the main component of our jobs program, as I said. I made it, I think, in 10 minutes. Thank you, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Abraham. I appreciate your appearance for council this evening, and I'm sure that council will give this due consideration, and we'll certainly keep you appraised of what reaction of council is.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight on the agenda this evening is a tentative labor contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. The item was deferred during the council meeting of August 25th, 2014. Mr. Conick.
Thank you, Council President Bonar. I'm going to go through the contract summary that we've been discussing in executive session for the last few sessions. This contract represents approximately 42 employees on the current roster.
Mr. Conick, can you hold this one moment, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Lynn, I forgot to recognize you.
I'm sorry, Council President Bonar. Because of a conflict, I must disqualify myself from this vote, and with the permission of my colleagues and council president, I'd ask to be excused from council chambers during this...
Without objection, Mr. Lynn, you are excused.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Conick, go ahead.
Thank you.
It's my omission, Sean, I...
As I indicated, this group and proposed contract represents 42 current employees. We have been negotiating at the table for approximately one year. We began negotiations in July of '13 and concluded them at the staff level in July of '14. The tentative framework for the financial side of this proposal was reached in April of this year, and the contract is proposed to expire June 30th of 2017. I'm going to briefly go through each of the highlighted items that we believe constitute the major framework of the agreement. On the item of personal leave, there is a personal leave clause associated with employees that are assigned to the electric department so that their schedules can mirror employees that are supervised by those employees that are covered under this agreement. Long-term disability insurance will no longer be provided to the ASME members based on this agreement. For vacation accrual, there will be an accelerated schedule for vacation accrual. The caps will remain in place at 18 hours per month on the max, but the actual implementation of the accrual schedule is accelerated for this group based on the negotiated package. Under vacation sellback, previously, employees were allowed to sell back either 40 or 80 hours of vacation. This will be changed under the proposal to increments of 20, which will allow them to sell back 20, 40, 60, or 80 hours at the end of the year. There is some adjustments to the sick time usage and also bereavement leave clauses of the benefit package. Under terminal leave, this proposal decreases the amount of terminal leave from 150 days, which is for the maximum employees, down to the current 100 days for the existing employees. However, employees that were hired after April 13th of 2014 would only be allowed to sell back 75 days of accrued sick leave at the end of their career. Under health insurance, and if you'll recall, health insurance was a major item with respect to the organization of this group, employees who are hired before April 13th of 2014 will continue to pay the 85-15 cost sharing for their careers while active. However, new employees being hired in after April 13th will pay on an 80-20 split, 80% the city, 20% cost sharing for the employee. Associated with this health care package, under retirement health care, we did create a retirement health care window. It affects six employees in the bargaining unit. Those employees must retire by June, or July 1st of 2016. If they do, they will revert back to the old cost-sharing formula, which is a formula associated with prior medical benefits. The employee, if it's employee-only coverage, would go back to it being paid 100% by the city of Dover with a formulated cost-sharing for the other components of health care for employee spouse, employee child, and/or family. There are adjustments regarding recording of hours for the timekeeping, some small adjustments associated with safety shoes and uniforms to the contract. Under the component of salaries, the proposal for salaries identifies four general wage increases, first one being backdating to April 1st of 2014 at 3%. The second one, July 1, backdating to July 1 of '14 at 3%. A proposed July 1 of 15, 3%, and a proposed July 1 of 16, 3%. And in addition to that, there were two $400 bonuses that would be applied to rosters that were effective on the date of contracts. As I said, there was also a health care cost window or retirement window. There are also in the contract three salary adjustments that are identified under three specific positions. In fiscal year '15, there are two additional adjustments proposed for fiscal year '16 in two of those three positions. There are some other minor changes to the contract as we proposed. The salary ranges will remain in place as they exist today, and the estimated cost of implementation of the contract over the contract period is on the high end of $331,000, but we expect that number to decline, as we indicated in the executive session, if people exercise the health care retirement window. Based on those parameters, as we've discussed in detail in the executive session, the management side of the negotiating team is recommending approval of the contract. This contract was voted on by the ASME unit several, it's probably been six weeks ago now, and was overwhelmingly recommended for approval by the bargaining unit. And again, I would recommend approval tonight based on the discussions outlined here, as well as the detailed discussions we've had in executive session with respect to this contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conick. Any questions by members of council? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you'd please direct this to Mr. Conick. Mr. Conick, is it the effect of this that if we approve this tonight, that there will basically be an immediate 6% raise retroactive to July 1st?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any further members of council who have questions? Mr. Hare.
Just to put it out there, I don't agree with that, but last year, we gave our non-bargaining people the opportunity to retire with full health care benefits, and we gave them a window of maybe two weeks. This contract's got, in my opinion, self-serving clause in it that allows six people to have a two-year window to decide if they want to retire with 100% health care. And taking our non-bargaining people and doing what we did, I just don't feel that's fair. And with that in mind, treating our non-bargaining people like that... And with that in mind, treating our non-bargaining people like that, and then turning around and doing this, I just don't think it's right, don't think it's fair, think it's a self-serving clause in there, and I won't be supporting it or voting in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Any other members of council have a comment? Seen none? What's the pleasure of council? Need a motion to approve or deny the contract agreement? Mr. Persa.
All right, since nobody's got a motion, I'll at least add my comments to it. I think everybody at this point has had their opportunity to review the terms of the agreements and whatnot. I, for one, have been one who's been waffling back and forth. I've been trying to weigh the advantages and the disadvantages of the agreement. One of the key aspects that the city asked the negotiating team to try to gain for the city was the ability to control future costs. Liabilities such as pensions and healthcare benefits have driven municipalities across the country into financial complications.
Point of order. Mr. Persa, kitchen, is your microphone up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I was getting ready to say the same thing.
Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you, Mr. Persa.
I guess to summarize what I just said is that, from my perspective, I've been weighing this, reasons for approving the union contract and against it. Reasons, I think, that are positive, that would be in the best interest that we approve this type of agreement, is that the cost certainty that this is gaining for the city. Our negotiating team, the city council basically has directed over the last couple of years, not only for this contract, but for other union contracts across the board, is gaining some cost certainty over liabilities such as healthcare costs particularly, and in addition to pension liabilities and things like that. Have been issues with other cities across the country that have created fiscal crises. And Dover, we're at a crossroads. We need to get control over these type of costs before we start drifting down a road where we may be joining those type of cities. We've asked the management team to gain these type of controls, which will benefit the city down the road. If we don't take these steps now, in 20 years or so, we may look back as we missed an opportunity to gain control of this. There are certainly terms in this agreement, which I don't like. The comments I've kind of made in these meetings is that, once you start reading the fine details, I have a difficult time buying into what's going on. But that said, I wasn't at the negotiating table, I didn't negotiate the specific terms, and when you negotiate, there's a give-and-take that occurs between all the different parties involved. What's important to each side, it basically balances out. At this point, the union has approved it the way it is. From my personal perspective, I don't like the terms that are in it, but on a macro level, I understand the city management is very happy with the cost certainty this gains the city in the long run. So within that framework is I'm willing to, with compromise, and give the city the cost certainty it needs moving forward at the expense of maybe some short-term disagreements I have with some of the specific provisions in the agreement, such as raises and percentage increases, all the things that I would never, at least from my personal standpoint, think about negotiating. But that was what was done, and in exchange for that, the city's gained something that I think the employees were not really big fans of giving up either. Regardless, from my perspective, I'm not looking at who individually within the unions have gained whatever they've gained or preserved whatever they've preserved. I've tried to divorce myself from looking at specific employees and who's, I couldn't tell you who's in this union if I ran across them. I know the people that are in it, but I don't know what union anybody's in, other than the obvious ones like the police department and things like that. But beyond that, I think it's in the city's best interest that we approve it for the sake of gaining cost certainty for future generations of the city, because if we don't, I think we're going to have, the city's going to have significant problems, budgetary and otherwise, in the next 10 to 15 years if we don't gain control over this. So despite the fact that I don't like the raised provisions and some of the other percentages and the special provisions, but the union can deal with that on their own. If they negotiated specific terms with specific employees, at this point, that's a union issue. They have lawyers that can figure out what to do with that on their own side. I think it's in the best interest of the city that we do this for that reason. So those are my comments.
Is that your motion?
Well, that wasn't a motion, but nobody had one, so I figured I better start talking.
Okay. Thank you for initiating some discussion.
If my comments prompt anybody else to speak, that's fine. If not, the application would be to approve the union contract as iterated by the city manager.
And that would be your motion?
Sure, yes.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion by Mr. Persa, seconded by Mr. Dixon for purposes of discussion. Questions on the motion? Mr. Slaven, then Mr. Herr.
Not a question so much as a comment. Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Persa, and to Mr. Herr as well. You echoed some of the concerns I've had. I had sent an email last night to Mr. Conick and to Council President Bonar thanking the negotiating team for getting us to this point, but just being candid in saying that I could not support the contract the way it is. I would like to get to a contract with this bargaining unit, but my fiduciary responsibility, as I see it, to the city precludes me from supporting it. I understand the long-term issues, I understand the short-term issues, but I simply can't support some of the short-term concessions that were made on this. We simply can't afford to be this type of employer. It's too expensive for us, and that's where I am on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven. Mr. Herr?
Just following up on what Mr. Persa said, I still say that it's, if everything's about money, this city's wasted more money in the last two years than we could probably start another city. And to treat our non-bargaining people the way we did, and then turn around and slap them in the face again with, no, we're going to do this, I just can't support it. And it was made, the comment was made, yeah, they were thrown under the bus. Well, it's just a matter of principle with me, and for the sake of six people, if the union wants to continue fighting it, okay. There's one, I don't agree with everything that's in there, but the one sticking point with me is, as I said, two years to determine if you want to retire with 100% healthcare? What? Oh, I know, you just want to take advantage of the 6%, the 3%, all this to help, you know, you can't make that decision in the next 60 days? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herr. Mr. Hutcherson.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly, I deeply appreciate each and every employee who works for the city. I was a part of that workforce, and when I look at this contract, it's a fairness with me. Everybody in that contract is not given equally, and that bothers me. And because of that, I'm not going to support it. And I think that those individuals who've got separate, special agreements is wrong. Quite frankly, I think you need to go back to the table and relook at it. There's 42 people covered under that contract, you all should come out with the same thing. That's my personal view.
Thank you, Mr. Hutcherson and Mrs. Williams.
I'm probably going to echo what a lot of people have already said, but I too share the same concerns that Mr. Persa has with, I think that the negotiating team did what we asked, which was to get a handle and to get under control some of our long-term liability issues such as pensions. Having said that, I can't support something that favors six people out of 42 and done across the board. It just, and that gives 12% raises in a less than two-year period. So I will be voting against this.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any other comments by members of council? See no further comments or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
I said vote yes.
Mr. Slaven?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Herr?
No.
Mr. Hutcherson?
No.
No. Motion fails 6-2. Item number nine on the agenda this evening is the US-13 Water Main Replacement Project at Delaware Department of Transportation invoice reimbursement. Staff has recommended authorization transfer funds to the amount of $63,692.74 from the fiscal 2015 Water Quality Improvement to complete the project funding necessary to issue a final payment to DelDOT in the amount of $216,515.74 for the paving associated with the US-13 Water Main Replacement Project. Mr. Conick.
Thank you. This is the final payment for this project. This project included the replacement of a large diameter water main along the US-13 corridor. If you'll recall, began somewhere in the vicinity of White Oak Road and traversed all the way up through Lepore Road and improved flow into the commercial district of Highway 13. We originally had this budgeted as a contingency item. There was a lawsuit that was associated with the final completion of the project, so it has put us in a deficit to complete the final payment of this contract associated with DelDOT. Originally, this work was estimated at $141,880 by the DelDOT engineers. However, during the final replacement of the asphalt, as well as the curb ramps, both quantities inflated for the final payment, which is billed to us at $216,515.74. We had signed an agreement with DelDOT initially that the city of Dover would handle the paving of Highway 13 in the amount of roughly a half a million dollars, and we would be transferring money from DelDOT to Dover. However, as we finished the project up, in my opinion at least, the decision was made correctly to revert the responsibility of paving of US-13 to DelDOT and their contractors. However, it has resulted in a bill of $216,515 to us. We are proposing to transfer the necessary funds from the Water Quality Improvements for fiscal year 15 to complete the balance of funding for the project, and we are requesting your concurrence to authorize us to transfer those funds in the amount of $63,692.74 to reimburse DelDOT in accordance with their invoice and close out the US-13 Water Main Project, project number WQ0907. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Conick. Any questions? Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Conick, do we have any recourse other than paying?
We have been through the invoice several times. The quantities were just simply underestimated, so we're not disputing anything regarding the invoice. It's unfortunate that there was additional handicap ramping that was necessary based on the first estimate, however, I think we're in a position where we do need to reimburse the state because the general framework of the agreement indicates it will be responsible for all costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any other questions? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Conick, is there anything that'll be harmed by this coming out of the Water Quality Improvements money?
We have at least one project that's ready to go to bid, but it is accommodated by the balance of funds left in the overall Water Quality Improvement. So we'll have about $63,000 less to work with this year, but we're still within the project scopes of the things that we believe will be bid this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conick, Mr. Anderson. Any further questions? Seen none? What's the pleasure of council? Mrs. Williams.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation by staff.
Is there a second? Mr. Dixon, seconds? Any further questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
No.
Mr. Hutcherson?
Yes.
Mr. Bonar?
Yes. Motion carries 5-4. Item number 12, first reading proposed ordinance 2014-21, which has been referred to us by the Safety Advisory and Transportation Committee. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinance, September 22, 2014. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of council chambers, or they may be obtained from the city clerk's office. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. This is actually the first ordinance drafted by our new fire marshal, and it just clarifies the standards for impact protection surrounding natural gas and liquid propane gas devices. Right now, the code is not specific, and sometimes it leads people to ask questions where, if the information's in the code, they could very easily design what needs to be designed. And then also, on occasion, it puts our fire marshal's office at odds with people who will, say, put a blue bollard in front of the gas device, which, again, the purpose of the bollard is to alert somebody that, you know, you need to stay away from here and to prevent impact. So the blending in is not what we're looking for. So again, this just provides the standards that have been in place and used administratively and puts them in code.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions of staff? Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Townsend, this will not affect people who are grilling, will it? Grillers.
No, not at all.
That was a question brought to me, and I didn't know the answer.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Persa, remind you, do use your mic, sir.
Okay. Ms. Townsend, I guess for the purpose, or for the benefit of lay readers, is it possible to include a definition of the word "bollard" to the average person who reads this?
We could do that.
There is a definition section, but it doesn't define what a bollard is, but then bollard itself is repetitively used throughout that.
Okay. We can add a definition, we can put together an amendment to bring forward for second reading.
I mean, that's a minor issue, but I think that would help to the average person who's not going to understand what a bollard is.
Okay.
No further questions or proposed amendments? I will now defer to the city clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with Section 1-9 of the Dover Code. Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance number 2014-21, amending Chapter 46, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1 in general, Section 46-4, Impact Protection of Natural Gas and LP Gas Devices. This constitutes the first reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 13 is the final reading of proposed ordinance 2014-19. The first reading of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during a council meeting of August 25. Copies of the ordinance are available at the entrance to council chambers. First, I'll entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the waiving of the reading. A separate motion will be necessary for its adoption. Pleasure of council. Need a motion to waive it?
Waive the reading.
Mr. Herr?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Slaven. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Proposed ordinance 2014-19, amending Chapter 98, Street Sidewalks, Storm Sewers, and Other Public Places. Article 1 in general, Section 98.5, or 98-5, Duty of Tenants or Owners to Maintain Sidewalks and Landscaped Areas Within the Street Right-of-Way and Appendix F, Fees and Fines. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed ordinance would make it a prohibition on sweeping, blowing, or dumping your grass clippings in the street sidewalk, storm drain, or water course. It also would provide the penalties if somebody does. Again, this is related to our municipal storm sewer, municipal separate storm sewer system permit that we have with DENREC and EPA, and this will help us get back into a compliance mode with them.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions of staff? Mr. Anderson?
No.
No?
I will have an amendment to make.
At the proper time, you may certainly make your amendment. Any further questions of staff? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We need the, we have the reading, and you're welcome to make your amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like
We need the -- we have the reading, and you're welcome to make your amendment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to -- there's been a lot of concern that I've heard around the community about this particular proposal, and it's -- and I would like to -- I am not a big fan of it myself, to say the least, but I think that if there's some clarification that people will have, if not being fans of it, they will be -- have a little more comfort. I would like to propose that in line 17, we strike the period after course and add the language "more than incidental amounts of grass," period. And the intent of that is that you have small -- the ordinance was intended to go after grass mainly being dumped in the streets from people cutting, not incidental amounts from people trimming and -- or something of that nature. So that's the amendment I assume is.
Thank you. Is there a second to the amendment? Seconded by Mr. Slavin. Mrs. Williams.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah.
Would you consider also amending it to also include acts of God?
You know, and absolutely. If the second has no objection to that.
God doesn't cut my grass.
But the wind can come and blow it from somebody else's lawn and into my sidewalk.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Persa?
Should the word incidental be defined to have a specific weight?
That was going to be my question. Thank you.
I would --
It's nice to have a couple of lawyers in the body.
In fact, I actually considered that, but I thought that might be a good second amendment to make.
God came first.
If you have a suggestion, I'd be glad to listen right now for a friendly amendment.
God came first, Mr. Anderson.
God always comes first, Mr. Anderson.
All right. We have an amendment to the ordinance as proposed by Mr. Anderson, and a suggestion that a definition of incidental be included. So before we vote on this, are there any questions on the amendment? Any questions at all on the amendment?
Sir.
Mr. Dixon?
The amount of grass clippings is my problem.
Well, that's fine. We're not -- we're voting on the amendment. We're asking for a definition of incidental. Mr. Lynn, you looked like you were going to raise your hand.
Just from my point of view, the rules of statutory construction control the interpretation of ordinances. So what these rules tell us is that if there's not a specific definition in the code, then you just -- what's the regular definition of incidental? So you just open up the dictionary and you look at incidental, and it says, accompanying but not a major part of, secondary, minor, peripheral, inessential, unimportant, insignificant, superfluous, de minimis. I think that we don't -- I question why we would need to define incidental when you just look to the dictionary definition of it unless it's defined in the code.
I agree.
I don't think we need to define incidental.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Mr. Anderson, would you withdraw your amendment?
No, no. My amendment stays there. It's worded.
You just don't need the definition, is that correct?
There was nothing offered yet.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
I'm open to listening to one. No one's offered one.
Thank you. Any other -- yes, Mr. Lynn.
I guess the only reason, you know, I see Mr. Persa's point, you know, what does incidental mean? Is it 10 blades of grass? Is it 200 blades of grass? I don't know. You know, what incidental tells us is that it's de minimis, a de minimis amount, insignificant or inconsequential amount. Personally, I don't think we need to say it's 50 blades of grass is insignificant, you know. I think it's -- I think it's probably fine with the amendment. I don't know if we need to define and say we need 100 blades of grass or something along those lines.
I withdraw my comment about lawyers being on the body. Mr. Persa?
If it's inconsequential, we don't need to amend it then.
Right.
That's correct.
So I think the bright line is, I want to know how much grass it is, I want to know how we're going to enforce it, how are you going to do DNA tests on grass to figure out whose yard it came from. I think it's very open to interpretation.
I think the purpose of it is, when someone mows their grass, and the inspector happens to be riding by and he sees a guy out there with his blower blowing everything down into the sewer, he's going to stop and say, hey, you can't do that. He's going to give him a ticket. It's not the guy that's trying to blow it away from the sewer so he can clean it up, and some of it goes in, and that's fine. I think we're trying to make too much out of this. I mean, it's to stop the guys that mow their backyard, dump their grass in the front, push it down the sewer.
And that's --
Mr. Dixon?
I think I said the interpretation.
Use your microphone, sir.
The interpretation of it is who's there to inspect what's there. And he may take a little bit for a whole lot, depends on who his mood for that day.
Well, if it's just a little, if he's intentionally blowing it down the sewer, then he's in violation.
But if he didn't?
If he didn't do it, then he's not in violation.
Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Townsend, wasn't this kind of aimed at landscapers who do it?
Not necessarily. I mean, we will certainly do an education and outreach effort to landscapers, but it could be a private owner.
I understand it could be a private owner, but I thought, you know, when you first brought it forward, I thought --
And large, large landholders who are, yes.
Well, then, that's what we're talking about, people who are deliberately mowing large amounts to remain undefined, large amounts of grass, blades undefined, into our sewer system and backlogging it and costing us more to ship it to the county, which is what this whole thing is all about, right? And coming in line with DENREC.
As a point of clarification to my colleagues, I think this is more of a DENREC and EPA issue, not necessarily what it's -- how it's going to the county. DENREC, as it stands now in Anne-Marie, correct me if I'm wrong, has the authority, under certain circumstances, to fine us as much as $1,000 a day per violation of this type of offense. I believe that's correct.
I think it's more than that.
I think it's probably --
I thought it was $10,000 a day.
It might be $5,000 a day, but I mean, you know, knowing DENREC, they have --
And the intent is not to have a backlog in the system, right?
Yeah, well, the intent is not to have the nutrients go into the water system, and I think that's, you know, and that's part of the problem that we have with a storm water system such as we have. So anyway, the amendment stands. We will first vote on the amendment, and then we'll go vote on the ordinance itself. Everybody clear on that? On the amendment, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bonar?
Yes. Motion carries. Eight-one. Now on the motion itself for the ordinance, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. President, this motion is to move it forward. I haven't decided yet how I'll vote on the final bill, but I move --
This is the final.
Exactly. I haven't decided yet. But I move that the ordinance be -- ordinance, what's it, 2014-19, is it?
That's correct.
Be approved as amended.
Thank you, sir. Zero second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Slavin. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Pass.
Is that a vote, Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Still no.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
I'll think about it. Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Bonar?
Yes. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
What was that?
The ordinance is adopted. Now I will say, after, now that we've finished voting on this, when I came home after we had the first reading of this ordinance and it came out into my neighborhood, one of my neighbors stopped me and said, okay, where are we going to blow our grass clippings? So I had to say, I guess we'll have to pick them up. Second thing that I had when I stopped on my front porch and I walked up and I looked at my circulating fan on the porch, and there was a note from one of my other neighbors saying, Bonar, you go too far. Well, that's my sentiment exactly, with the exception of very few violators of this ordinance, and I mean very few. This isn't a major problem, and I, you know, I didn't see a necessity vote, but in order to keep us from having to be fined by DENREC, some stupid amount, I thought that was the best thing for this to be passed. Tim?
I only voted just to make the whole thing stop.
Mr. President, would you quantify stupid, please? Just for DENREC.
Any council members' announcements tonight? I would remind everybody, tomorrow is primary election day in the state of Delaware. No matter who you support or who you have supported, I would encourage you to exercise your right and go out and vote. As they say, if you don't vote, you shouldn't complain.
Thank you, sir.
That's your constitutional right. I don't remember what time the polls are open off the top of my head, but I think it's normal voting hours tomorrow. 7:00 AM tomorrow morning until 8:00 PM tomorrow night, and you can actually go online and find out where you need to vote. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into special council meeting to discuss personnel matters. Moved by Mr. Dixon.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. We are adjourned into special council meeting, and we'll give a brief few minutes to set up the system.